...in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Moes, would you lead us? Thank you, and now, Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
Bruce Hentges.
Here.
Monica Segutter-Schwarz.
Here.
Shannon Hawes.
Here.
Jerry Von Korf.
Yes.
Jeff Polis.
Yes.
Al Dogan.
Yes.
Bruce Moes here. And, Mr. Chair, the record will show that we're joined this evening by Superintendent Willie Jett, Assistant Superintendent Marcia Beisch, Executive Directors Lori Post, Carol Potter, Gary Ganji, Tracy Flynn Bowe, Amy Scallarood, and Director Kami Deland.
Thank you, Mr. Moes. First order of business tonight is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda consists of non-controversial items that the Board routinely adopts without any debate. Any single member of the Board may remove an item from the Consent Agenda by requesting removal at the time the Consent Agenda is moved for adoption. The full text of items can be found at the end of the Agenda. On tonight's Consent Agenda, we have Item A: The Approval of the Agenda; B: The Approval of the Minutes for the Meetings of December 21st and January 2nd and January 10th; C: The Approval of Monthly Treasurer's Report for October 17 and November 17; D: The Approval of Payment of Bills and Other Financial Transactions in the Grand Total Amount of $6,829,216.06; Approval of Personnel and Staff Changes; Acceptance of Grant Awards and Donations; Quarryview Education Center Change Orders totaling plus $78,712.09; Quarterly Expenditures for Board Members from October 1st through December 31st; South Junior High Secure Entry Change Orders totaling plus $6,117.00; and J is Acceptance of the Monthly Financial Report for November 2017. Do we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Al, I'll make that motion.
Looking for a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
Maker of the motion, Jeff Polis.
Yes.
Second maker of the motion, Bruce Hentges.
Yes.
Monica Segutter-Schwarz.
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf.
Yes.
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Al Dogan.
Yes.
Bruce Moes, yes.
Next up is the first information item, an update on our long-term facilities maintenance projects, and that will be conducted by Amy Scallarood and Derek Fagan.
He'll handle the presentation.
Good evening, Chair Dogan, Superintendent Jett, members of the Board. We're here tonight to do a presentation on the 2018-2019 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Projects. I'm going to start this evening by introducing Derek to all of you. I would say he's new, but he's been with us since July, but I have a suspicion that most, if not all, of you probably haven't formally met him or been introduced to him yet. So, he is with me tonight. He is our new Director of Buildings and Grounds, and so we'll go through the presentation, and then he can answer questions if there's questions on specific projects that we have planned.
Nice to meet everyone.
So, first, just a quick overview of long-term facilities maintenance revenue. The funding formula for long-term facilities maintenance revenue is set in legislature, and the revenue comes from two sources. There is a levy component and an aid component. The majority of it, of the revenue, comes in levy, and there's a small aid portion. And this new long-term facilities maintenance program took effect July 1st, 2016, and it replaced the previous alternative facility deferred maintenance and health and safety There are three allowable uses for long-term facilities maintenance revenue. It can be used for increasing school facility accessibility, or ADA, also known as ADA projects. It can be used for approved health and safety expenditures in accordance with the health and safety statutes, and then also eligible projects that are necessary to prevent further erosion of facilities. That's the way the Department of Ed words that. And, just to kind of clarify, there's a few key points there. Number one, it has to be for a district-owned facility. So, if we're leasing a facility somewhere, we can't use our long-term facilities maintenance funds to do repairs on that facility or property. There's no remodeling allowed, and that includes remodeling to repurpose a space. So, for example, flooring, if the flooring is deteriorated, is normally an eligible expense. However, if that flooring is intended to be replaced because it used to be carpet for a classroom, and now we want it to be tile, that's now not eligible because the intention or the reason behind the project is to repurpose that space. Also, it can't be used to increase space or add square footage, and no new construction. There we go. In terms of the 2018-19 budget, there are two components of the budget. The first portion, which is what we're presenting on tonight, is the 2018-2019 project expenditures. That is $6,385,000. There is also $2,792,551 for debt service payments, and that is the amount that is allocated to the Debt Service Fund to pay for the bond payments on the 2015A Alternative Facilities Bonds. So, those were the bonds that were issued a number of years back to fund the various HVAC projects throughout the district. So, that would have been Westwood, Clearview, Madison, McKinley, Roosevelt, North and South. Those projects are already completed, as well as Apollo, which will conclude this summer. And then, just a note that this dollar amount in terms of the total long-term facilities maintenance revenue was approved by the Board in July as part of the Department of Education's requirement to approve a 10-year plan. In addition, it was included in the final levy approval in December. So then, as far as 2018-19 projects, the first line item there, and we'll go through these fairly quickly. If there's questions on anything specifically, we'll leave some time at the end. The first item is health and safety projects. These projects generally aren't identified upfront. They kind of tend to come up throughout the year. We allocate an estimated amount based on expenditures from prior years. For 2018-19, we're estimating that to be $1.4 million. The next four line items are for various district-wide repairs or projects. Those haven't necessarily been determined or allocated specifically by site. Some additional needs analysis will need to be done as to how that gets allocated site-wise. But there's $500,000 for LED lighting replacement, $285,000 for parking lot repairs, $50,000 for bus chute curb repairs, and $40,000 for some fire panel repairs. The next item is the largest single component of next year's budget, the Apollo HVAC project. To round out, the completion of that project is $2.5 million. And then, I'm not going to go, I won't go through each dollar amount, but I'll just kind of list the projects. Also at Apollo, we have a compressor replacement, stadium painting and theater lights. There is painting for the District Administrative Office Building. At Discovery, air balancing, which is an HVAC project, gym and cafeteria painting, and then resurfacing of the basketball court outside, as well as sink replacement. At Kennedy, there is scheduled HVAC repairs and sidewalk repairs. At Lincoln, cafeteria light replacement and painting. At Madison, there is sidewalk repairs. McKinley has cabinet replacement scheduled. North has some door replacement in some specific identified areas. This is our next biggest project, is the roof replacement at Oak Hill. That is a project that's been needing to be done here within the next year to two years. It's identified, we're having some significant leak problems over there. So, that's kind of our, one of our largest projects. Also at Oak Hill, sink replacement. At Roosevelt, an exterior stair project. And then at South, bathroom partition, sidewalk repairs, and tuck pointing. And then at Tullahi, air balancing, clock replacement, sidewalk repairs and sink replacement. And then at Westwood, some HVAC equipment improvements and repairs, as well as sidewalk repairs. So, all of those items total up to the $6,385,000, and that's what we have prepared unless there's questions. I know we went through that kind of quickly, but it's a lot of numbers.
I just have a question that just came up as I was looking through this as you were presenting, but Kennedy is a relatively new school, and I noticed that the HVAC repairs at Kennedy are $200,000, which seems like a pretty big expenditure, especially when Westwood is $20,000. And Kennedy's a, you know, like I said, kind of a relatively new school, and didn't we just do quite a bit of work out there? Could you just talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, and I'll turn that over to Derek because I will inevitably technically say something incorrect, so.
Yes, the, my understanding is that a lot of the work at Westwood has already been done over the past few years as far as the HVAC requirements that were needed to be done there. What we're doing, what we're doing now is, at Westwood, is more of just touch-ups on a few things that got missed over the years. Kennedy is a completely different system. It is a very difficult system to work with and is generally a high-maintenance system. And we've identified a few pieces that desperately need to be fixed to keep it running. We believe that this is a much better solution than completely replacing the entire system, and that we should be able to get another five years or so out of this in this current state with these repairs.
Shannon?
Can you explain to me the selection process? Where do the requests, how do, the process of how the requests come in for each building? Who makes those? That process, as well as then the selection process of which ones are chosen?
So, there's a few factors. Some of the major projects may be identified a few years out in advance, such as roofing replacements, major significant replacements with HVAC projects. In terms of the smaller projects, what's done is we solicit feedback and have the head engineers at each building submit lists of what their building needs are. Derek reviews those lists, goes to the building, looks at the facilities to confirm, you know, whether that's a need versus a want, or maybe that can be postponed a few years. As part of that process, they identify kind of their priority order. So, if they request 10 projects, maybe what's their one or two that are really critical, that can't be delayed. And so Derek reviews that one-on-one with them, and then Derek and myself, as well as getting input from Cabinet, review that list of proposed projects to determine what gets done each year.
Jeff?
Derek, the system you described out at Kennedy that's hard to work with, you know, difficult, whatever you want to call it, that is not the same system we're putting in at Quarryview, is it? Please? No. No. No, sir, the, the- Is it because it's the thermal? That's the geothermal system, yes. And that's the only place we have that, and it is very different than anything else we are working with, and it's not a standard system. It is, you know, the, the systems that we have in all the other buildings, the system that's going in at Quarryview is just like the systems we've been replacing all, in all of the buildings as we've gone through our HVAC projects.
I have a separate question. I just want to follow up to Jeff's question, and then might assume then that the system that's going in at the New Tech High School is different than the, is, that's not a geothermal system at all, okay?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you. My question and observation is this, and since my tenure on the Board, I've been always very interested in, by these reports, long-term facilities maintenance reports. And I first became aware of them back in 2005 when we did our first formal District Facilities Task Force that was, that was put together by then Superintendent Bruce Watkins 2005, 2008, and 2011, as we were working towards, in those days, the future of a tech replacement. But what went along with those were the publishing of those long-term facilities maintenance plans, so that we kind of, those things were sort of, in some way, fashioned to allow us to identify in that building, particularly tech, what was becoming very problematic and would require a new building as opposed to just repairing things. So, my question is, I should maybe, in fairness, offer this to the Superintendent, in that is, are we sort of looking in that regards to that, the kind of District Facilities Task Force is looking into the future by some measure of time, three years revisiting things like that, so that we kind of know where we're going in terms of other facilities presently and may be needed in the future?
The answer to that is yes. The two individuals standing before you today, the Executive Director and Derek, they might be new to their positions per se, but it's on their and on our to-do list. One of the conversations that we always have is that we understand the need to be planful, and bottom line is it's our responsibility to our community. So, the answer to your question is yes.
Thank you very much.
Barry?
I want to understand, kind of in a follow-up to what Shannon asked, the first major step in this process is the 10-year plan. Some of these things would be in the 10-year plan, is that right?
Correct.
And then, there might be things that jump on here that were not in the 10-year plan because you discovered them after we did the 10-year plan.
Right, and sometimes things shift years between that. So, for example, a roofing project may have been scheduled two years from now, but if repairs are such that it needs to get shifted up, and that 10-year plan is up here pretty soon to be updated, and so that will be in the near future.
And when we, my recollection is when we approved the 10-year plan, we're not approving anything but the plan. We haven't approved, you can't do any, any projects off the plan. There's, there's got to be another, a decision to take the things off the plan and put them into this year's work plan.
And under the new Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Program, there's kind of two different things that both get referred to as the 10-year plan. There's the 10-year plan that lists specific projects, that we have an outside company come in and help us, you know, do that long-term perspective planning. And then there's the 10-year plan that gets approved annually in July for the Department of Ed. What the 10-year plan is that goes to the Department of Ed is really more of a high level. This is kind of where we think we're going to be in total dollars, and so that 10-year plan that the outside company does has not been updated in a few years, and so that needs to be completed yet.
And these, this 2018 plan has, I can't remember, did this come before the Board and we approved it?
The dollar amount, yes. The specific projects, no. So, historically, we bring those specific projects in July at the time you approve the dollar amount. However, with vacancies and positions and turnover and everything, it just wasn't realistic this year to be able to do that analysis and work with the engineers and get the feedback that we needed to identify that, those projects that early.
So, is the plan to skip over the part where the Board approves the projects? Is that?
No, the intention would be that going forward, we move this portion where you approve the projects back to, in with the July presentation where you approve the dollar amount that we're going to levy.
These, this is an informational item for the approval that's going to come in July. The total dollars.
The question that I perceive Jerry to be-
I'm not trying to create problems.
No, I know you're not.
I can't remember whether we approve these projects or just the number. That's, I just can't remember.
You didn't approve the projects. Right now, this is an information item, and as we get estimates and we actually start to bid here this spring, this list will get modified and updated, and it's part of the final, or the budget approval process that will come to you later this spring.
Each of these items will come to us separately. Is that what you're saying?
Typically not. Typically, the ones that are over the threshold to require bids will come forward separately with, you know, a request for, a call for bids. But just like with any other, you know, expenditure within the district, it's part of that total budget that you'll approve in June.
And to add to that, because I think I understand the question that Mr. Von Korf is asking, bottom line is, will it come before the Board Finance Committee prior? The answer is yes. And then, would things still happen and be presented to the Board? The answer to that is yes. So, I hear you as saying, when you said it in a different manner, when you, when you presented and said, is this going to just happen without us, the Board, having any concept that this is going on? The answer to that was no. It's going to be presented. There is a process. It is going to come before the Board. It is going to go through the way that we do things.
Yeah, because we had, through inadvertence in a prior administration, some parking, some playground stuff that got approved, and this isn't an example of that. This is going to get, each of the projects eventually is going to get a Board approval. If the auditor comes to tech and say, how did you get to spend $2 million on this? They're going to be able to find a Board approval.
And bottom line is you're looking at checks and balances.
All right. Thank you.
I'm going to go back and ask one more question on that Kennedy thing. So, we had, we, about two years ago, one or two years ago, we replaced the controls on that system. Is this anything in relation to the changeover of the controls to the new system? No?
No, the adjustments we need to make are all mechanical. It is just, it's a, it's a wearing out of parts and lifespan, and the lifespan of most of the pieces that are moving parts in the, in the geothermal system have approximately a 10-year lifespan. We are at the end of that lifespan, and so we're going to need to replace a bunch of those moving parts.
And this was an informational item, so, yes, Willie?
Comment?
Yes.
That's okay. As Amy said earlier, Mr. Fagan, Derek is new and not new. And so, one of the things I wanted to mention was, earlier, there was a health scare as it relates to Derek. And first and foremost, from a district perspective, we're glad to see that you are healthy, that you are feeling better, that you are well. I'm sure that your family, especially your little ones, are happy that Dad is doing just fine. And as a district, we're just looking forward to your expertise and to you sharing your knowledge and your passion. So, thank you.
Next up is Board Policy Review. Policy 412: Expense Reimbursement, Second Reading, and I believe that's you again, Amy, you're correct.
Yes, it is. So, this is the second reading. It was reviewed at the work session this month. There have been no changes since what was reviewed at the work session. I'll briefly highlight what the significant changes were, just for those in the public who may not have been at the work session. So, the first change comes in the meals section, just some clarification in terms of leaving from home versus leaving for, from an employee's place of work, in terms of whether an employee is eligible to claim a reimbursement for a meal, as well as adding some language in Sections A, B, and C to specify that meals are also allowable if you're away from home overnight. That's not a change in practice. That just wasn't something that was spelled out in the policy. The next change also relates to meal reimbursements, and this is the primary reason that the policy had come forward for revision, is that the MMB Commissioner now has a policy that we must follow whenever we're using federal funds, and so that policy, in some regards, was more restrictive than our previous policy. And so, this is one of the changes that we're making to align with that MMB policy, is requiring receipts for all meal reimbursements. You'll see in the area that has the strike through, previously, yes?
You can finish what you were saying.
Okay. Previously, we use per diems to reimburse if the travel status was more than one day, and so that is a change to require the receipts for all meals.
Oh, I didn't really want to cut in, but on the second reading, if there, there weren't any changes since the first reading?
Correct.
Does, so I think normally we'll just, does the Board have any questions? We all received a copy of it.
Perfect.
Does the Board have any questions on any of the changes that were made since the last one? So, you don't need to go through each one of them again. No questions?
We're good.
So, this was a second reading?
Correct, so it will come for-
So, it'll come before us again at the workshop for approval. So, if there are any more, if you see anything after you leave here this evening and you want to bring it up, we're going to bring it up at the workshop next time. So, not to cut you off, Amy, but-
Nope, that's all right.
The next item on our agenda tonight is a summary of the January 10th work session and a preview of the February work session. Dr. Marcia Beisch.
Good evening, Chair Dogan, Superintendent Jett, and members of the Board. So, the last board meeting was typically, was held on what would have typically been a workshop evening. The agenda that evening included Student Services/Special Education Presentation. Carol Potter, Executive Director of Student Services/Special Education, along with Student Services/Special Education Administrators, presented information regarding the continuum of services provided within St. Cloud Area School District 742, sharing instructional, behavioral, functional, and transitional programmatic highlights. Ms. Potter considered, shared that we are considered a regional center due to the continuum of services we provide, and we have a highly skilled staff that provide these services. Jeff Horton, Director of Student Services, provided information on health services, nursing, collaborative action teams, school climate, which includes social-emotional learning, and PBIS, which is positive behavioral and instructional supports. Adsys, chemical health counseling, co-located mental health services in Section 504. Brenda Blackmore, Director of Special Education Programs, shared information on professional development for licensed and non-licensed staff, and shared the qualifying disabilities for special education, along with the services and supports provided to eligible students. She also talked about the due process cycle and the continuum of special education services birthed through age 21. Kate Bukowski, Director of Alternative Programs, shared information on Level 4 programming. Colleen Carlson, Director of Care and Treatment Programs, provided information on day treatment programs, as well as Clarice House Recovery Plus, St. Cloud Hospital, and 180 Degrees. Carol Potter concluded the presentation, sharing information on adaptive sports. Board Member Jerry Von Korf presented and discussed information on special education funding, the growing funding deficit, cross subsidies, and the impact that it has on St. Cloud Area School District. Board Members then engaged in dialogue with Senator Jerry Wolf and Representative Jim Knoblock regarding special education funding issues. The next item on the agenda was a New Tech High School presentation. David Leopold, Architect IIW Minnesota, along with Principal Charlie Eisenreich, presented an overview of the New Tech High School. Mr. Leopold shared information on the design of the new 21st Century School, and Mr. Eisenreich reviewed the planning process that took place in preparation for the building of the New Tech High School. Next on the agenda was Quarryview Education Center Presentation. John Meyer, Senior Project Manager, Ari Morton, shared construction photos and the current project status of the new Quarryview Education Center. We then had the first reading of Board Policy 412 by Amy Scallarood, Interim Executive Director of Business Services. The next- The next item on the agenda was a New Tech High School Update Bid Award, and David Leopold, along with Andy Faulkner, ICS Consulting, presented an update on the construction progress. And Andy reviewed the recommendation for bid awards for Bid Package Number 3, which opened on December 21st. And the last item on the agenda was an update on the future District Office Administrative Offices, and that was presented by Gary Ganji, Executive Director of Operations, along with Amy Scholarood, and they presented an update on the design, on the status of the design and remodeling of the former Minnesota School of Business building, which will become the new District Administrative Offices for District 742. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. And on behalf of the Board, I once again want to thank Senator Jerry Relf and Representative Jim Knoblock for attending our January 10th workshop meeting, which we talked about special education, or had a discussion on special education. It's a very important subject for our district, and they both volunteered to come in and spend an evening with the School Board, learning about special education. So, we're very appreciative of that, and I want to thank them for doing so.
Yes, Bruce?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add to that in a slightly different manner, and that was a, I too am very appreciative of their attendance. I want to just say that I think I'm in a position, my tenure on this Board, along with my colleague Jerry Von Korf, to have heard an awful lot of great presentations over the years in terms of our special education and Student Services reports. It just gets better, these reports. They're just more thorough and more instructive, more informative, more inspiring. It just is a wonderful programs that we have, and we learn that because of the reports that we get. So, I can't think, from my point of view, as one Board Member, I can't say enough gratitude and thank you to the reports that all of those Directors and Coordinators and Supervisors gave that day in that field. Then I also want to simply say that I have the same enthusiasm and the same respect and admiration for the reports that we're getting on our buildings, the new buildings, Tech High School and Quarry View. I'm very appreciative of the Architects and the Builders and the High School Design Committee. Every time they come and speak to the whole Board and then to this Board Member, I learn more from them than anybody else. And I am so appreciative to know what is happening, and I feel confident when I'm asked questions in public and private about what's going on, that I can give them information that comes from those people that are experts at it. And I'm so appreciative of that. And then, of course, to know where we are in the DAO evolution of our new building and when we're going to be in there and what that's going to look like, the internal reporting that we got on that, thank you very much, Mr. Ganji. It just is a very satisfying feeling to hear from the governance position here, these operational reports with the instructional undertones to them. They are just invaluable to a governing body to hear these operational and instructional perspectives. Cannot say thank you enough to all persons in operations and instruction for that kind of great support that you give us as a Board. Thank you very much.
I'm sure everyone on the Board would agree with you on that.
I'm sure they will. Thank you.
Next up on the agenda this evening is our first action item. It's a Request for Proposals, District Wireless Network, District Security System, and District Phone System. Tom Pavick, Ellerton Associates, along with Gary Ganji and Amy Scholarood will be presenting.
Good evening, Chair Dalgrin, Members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Jett. As you are all aware, we have three current building projects. Quarry View, the new District Office, and the New Tech High School will need to be equipped with current and robust technology systems. We have the challenge of adding these new systems that will interface with our existing systems, existing systems of telephone, wireless, and security. Tom Pavick from Ellerton Associates has assessed our needs and is prepared to plan to equip these three sites with current, robust technology that will interface with our current systems. The plan will provide an option to migrate the remainder of our systems in our district sites over time. I'll now turn it over to Tom to present his findings and next steps, and then we'll be available for questions.
So, thank you. I'm Tom Pavick with Ellerton Associates. We are an independent consulting group. We don't represent any manufacturers or any vendors. We are completely agnostic as to the products that go in. What we do is try to do things based on individual need. And as Gary had indicated, you've got some challenges here. There's three different construction projects you have going up. The, and the systems we're talking about is wireless access, so that, you know, you can get the wireless Wi-Fi in there, telephone systems, and security systems. In security systems, we have paging, video surveillance, and access control as a part of those things. All of these systems are best and most efficient if they're managed as a district-wide solution. An example might be, if I have card access and I have an employee that left, I can make one change and make sure that the card doesn't work anywhere in the district. So, typically, what we would do is add these new construction project technologies to the district's solutions. Problem is, your systems are old and out of service, and they're in need of replacement, but you don't have the budgets to do that now. So, what, the worst thing that can happen is you treat every location like an island, and you end up with 15 different systems and end up being managed separately, and it's real expensive and takes a lot of manpower to do that. So, you just don't have that budget. So, what I've come up with as a recommendation is to put together three different RFPs. And the RFPs are tactical in that we're looking at the first three locations. We've got detailed design and pricing for those three locations, but it's really more of a strategic plan so that we can find a vendor, find recommended products, have long-term price guarantees for equipment, software, and professional services, so that the systems, if you need to replace or the budget becomes available, you can add to these systems as a strategic, long-term plan and end up with a district-wide solution when you have the funding to do that. Doesn't mean you have to replace any of them. It doesn't, it, the only thing you may be committing to is the first three systems, but it does allow you a way so that we can, if you have a new construction project or you have a failure of a system, you have a vendor, you don't have to go to bid again. You've competitively bid this process. It'll save time in upgrading system, and there's no additional program that will be needed in, over the time. So, this RFP is based on your needs. I didn't write it around any manufacturers. What I'm looking for is an appropriate partner, that you can partner with these different technologies, and that it's open and competitive, so that we're looking at multiple manufacturers, multiple vendors. We will evaluate these RFPs on the technology that they're looking at, service and support, vendor, cost, and we're looking at three different things from a cost. We're looking at capital costs, we're looking at operating costs, and what vehicle they have to protect with long-term price protection. For example, some vendors might have, already have a state contract, so they've negotiated that with the state. Well, you've competitively purchased this, you can use that vehicle to purchase things in the future. Technology changes, you're protected because those are based on discount. We can generate our own type of discount structure with the vendor, or another option would be that they guarantee you a markup. They disclose your costs and say, this is what our markup is. But that will be a third factor in the evaluation from a pricing, is how to make sure that you're protected and not, once you've selected a vendor, they're going to take advantage of you in the future because you've, you've already kind of got them set up. So, with that, I'll ask if there's any questions.
Jeff?
Sir, could you give me your thoughts in, about biometric versus card swipe? What's, how much longer are card swipes even going to be relevant?
I see card swipes being around for a while. The district does have some issues with their current cards. They're a technology that's very easy to clone. So, there's something that should happen, and one thing that could happen is changing card types. The other one could be dual authentication, which might be biometrics, you might have a fingerprint or some other kind of thing, so you've got the card, but you have something else that'll authenticate it. The, this particular RFP is based on manufacturer discount. So, even though, right now, we don't have biometrics in these first three locations, because we're looking for a discount, if we decide that that's the best method to go with, we can still buy that product because we've got a guaranteed discount. I think there are some long-term strategies that the district needs to go through to determine what's the best way to go and authenticate. And so, that's a really good question, and this RFP will be available, you can purchase, but there's more discussions that I think the district has to wrestle with as to what's going to be the most effective way to get access and make sure that you're authenticated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just, just to help me understand, is this, you're making this presentation to us here this evening, and it's very interesting. Has this been, does this, has this been filtered through? Have you had these conversations at other levels in the district? I mean, are we hearing this as a Board? I'm hearing it for the first time, but has, are these conversations been, having, been done with the technology people in our district and our executive directors and our superintendent things like that? Gary, I guess I'm kind of looking at you.
Jeff, very good question. Yes, we've, we've, you know, from the needs assessment on, we've involved staff. So, go through the needs assessment, see what we currently have, see what we need. Some draft proposals that Tom has sent, real thick proposals. Our, Ryan has looked through those, Derek's looked through those, Amy has, I have, Jim Tastow has, I think Derek has probably had some of his staff look through them as well. And we took information to Cabinet this past week.
So, what this esteemed gentleman is talking to us about tonight already has some district fingerprints all over it?
Correct.
Is that right? And I thank you very much for coming here and presenting it like this, but I'm always looking for it to have some kind of touched by the district sort of thing.
All of the elements have been very well thought through, and in fact, I would say that nothing that we're looking at is really extraordinary or opulent. It's very basic. In fact, there's some decisions we've made to say, okay, for example, in paging, there's a lot of different things, can be paging in buildings, but we're not really ready as a district to say, this is the standard that we want to deal with. So, what we did is put some regular speakers in, and then we cabled in a way that if we decide we want a different standard in the classrooms in the future, we don't have to re-cable, and it's just the stuff outside the cabling that can be done. So, there's a lot of discussion in all of these different things, and there's quite a bit of information that's gone back and forth. And I will also say, this does, in fact, this process allows for flexibility. So, if your needs change, your desires change, the technology that's available change, we have a vehicle that we can purchase that, that we've had competitively bid.
Thank you very much. Monica?
I got lost, so I'm sorry. I was all okay until you said that you're going to have three RFPs, and then I got lost there. Could you explain to me again what is the three RFPs, please?
Pardon?
I got, I'm going back to your presentation.
Right?
Yeah, so, so I think that I didn't understand.
That, what the three RFPs are for?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, the three different systems are, first one is wireless access points, so that's the Wi-Fi that you get, you know, when you try to do your computers to the Wi-Fi. There's a telephone system, and then there's security, and that security includes camera surveillance, card access or access control in your buildings, and then we also have paging. The reason we selected three different separate RFPs is the vendors are different in those. Vendors that do access control and video and paging are typically, you know, they, those vendors do all three of those, but they might not do phones. So, we had phone, the phone is separate, and then the wireless access point is separate also.
Bruce?
Yes, thanks for your presentation, Tom. I have no question that, working with you, our professional technology staff can design a great system for the district. My question goes to the budget for this, and just so that I understand, right now, the plan is that there are three buildings for which we will be planning to install this new technology, and that the budgets for those services are in those building budgets. Is that correct? Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Okay.
So, for all three of the buildings, so for the new District Administrative Office, Quarry View, and Tech, these systems that we're getting pricing for, we have estimates already in the budgets for those three projects.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, we'll get a cost for the rest of the buildings, but at that time, then, we'll have to look for, we'll only be able to do what we can afford in terms of updating the technology for the other systems, other buildings, rather.
And we're actually asking them only to submit their pricing for the three, the three buildings. However, the individual components that go into that pricing, they would extend to future projects. So, if we got to a point where there was funding available, or the legislature changed the allowable uses of long-term facilities maintenance, and we had an identified budget, then we could ask the vendor that was selected at that time to submit pricing for those other sites.
That was going to be my third question regarding that, and that is, this is where we are asking the state legislature to allow districts to use long-term facilities lease, or long-term facility levy monies to do these kinds of building improvements?
Correct.
Okay.
And I hate to correct you, but we do, on the phone and on the wireless, we're asking for the three tactical prices, but we happen to have information because we did studies on those. So, we're asking them to price out all of the locations. Those, we know that they might change, those sorts of things, when you buy them, but those particular systems, you might find that if we buy these three systems, it's a little bit more expensive upfront, but when you go to the district, it's less expensive. So, it's important that we measure that more, that extended cost. We've only talked about those, those three locations as being things we're buying from, but that the other, we are asking for that pricing, but that's not necessarily, it'd be good for budgeting when you're looking for planning purposes. The security and access control, we didn't do a study where we did an inventory of what you've got at all the locations. Plus, those technologies have changed, we probably wouldn't emulate them exactly like they are now, so that's why we didn't do it on those.
Okay. Thank you.
Jerry?
The, the, the equipment and services that is encompassed by these RFPs, grand total, how much merchandise and services are we talking about?
For all?
I think you bought the whole package.
For the whole district?
I mean, this is going to drive a bunch of, I understand you're not committing to anything, but I'm trying to get an idea of the magnitude of this.
For the three sites or district? Three sites.
Well, whatever it is that we're approving, I'm have, a little bit confused as to what it is we're actually approving.
And you're not, you're not approving any expenditures now?
Yeah, sure, I understand.
We'll be, we'll be back. But if I were to just give you quick estimates, and I apologize, I don't have that number prepared, I think in the phone systems, we're probably looking in the neighborhood of $150,000 to $200,000, probably similar number in, probably similar number in any of those. So, we're probably $500,000 to $700,000 all combined with all of these technologies. And that's just off the top of my head, so I, you know, if that's an answer you want, we do have budgets, we prepared for all of these, and we can get to those specifically.
And that's the three?
That would be all three of those.
But the proposals envision... But the proposals envision locking, whatever those three are, into a long-term system that will, over time, spend more money as needed based on the, the...
So you have a vision, we have a target, what the phone system's going to look for. As you have bud, budget, we just keep on going to that, that target.
I have clients that do RFPs, and I do RFPs for my own services to government. What's really troubling me is I, I don't quite, I can't connect, I don't, I don't feel like, after we approve this, that there would be any way of telling whether what you actually put out is consistent or not consistent with what we're approving. It just seems like we're, it seems like there could be a...
So the structure...
Let me just finish. It seems like there could be more meat on this. If somebody came to me and said, what did you tell them to go do? I, I know that, I can't have the plans, that they're not plans and specifications, but it feels like this is pretty, a pretty sparse approval.
So the structure of the agreements will be, we've got in the RFPs, RFP, design standards, installation standards, service standards, all of those types of things. And then the initial agreement won't spend any money.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the money.
It'll be, it'll be, you agree over the next five years that for this particular component, you're going to give us a X amount of discount off a manufacturer's list price. You agree that your hourly rate for installation will be X amount with an escalation factor of not to exceed this. So all of these prices and components are what go into that agreement. Then when you get the pricing, you just check that against the agreement, make sure that that's, that's adheres to that.
But what you're telling me, is that written somewhere? Have they seen something that, we're approving something that they've seen, but we're not seeing? It's kind of how it feels to me. And I, look, I'm in favor of doing this. I, we had, when I was on Finance Committee, a series of discussions about the need, I believe in the need. It just seems like I'm just about to approve something that is so vague that I can't track it. If I see it go up on the website, I, it could, it feels like it could be anything. And that, isn't it, isn't there some description that would be not the whole thing, but an explanation of what it is that we're doing here that, other than phone system? And maybe I'm the only one that feels this way, but it, having...
Are you talking about the...
Having done, clients do RFPs, and usually there's something more, more specific than just phone system. And, and that's, I'm uncomfortable, I don't want to gum up the works, but it does feel like there's almost nothing here. I know there's something there, but what are we approving?
What does that phone system look like? The features, that type of thing?
Well, you're going to take this and turn it into something, or you already have turned it in to something. And isn't there like a two or three or four-page description of the?
Let me interject for a second. So bottom line is board, there is a feeling that there needs to be some more information. So that, nope, nope, I'm, I'm just, I'm just going there. And so until, if, if any one of you ever had a question and you needed some more information, we always try to provide that information. And so in terms of understanding and hearing what you're saying, Jerry, that is something that we need to go ahead. And in the same manner that we prepare agendas, and we've been working to provide the information that the board needs to understand things, in this case, here's a moment where we need to do a little more explanation, whether it's the two or three or four paragraphs, or the two or three or four pages, the way that you said it. And I think we can provide that.
I mean, usually there would have been something that would have gone to the Finance Committee, I think, and they would have seen, we're going to get, I don't know, this kind of phone system, and...
I mean, at this stage, you know, and I, let me just talk about a potential way that this could go forward. And I, I've been doing this for 28 years, so a lot of school districts. If we, you know, because right now what we're looking at is approval to put the RFPs on the street. If when we come back and we say, this is what we recommend, this is the phone system, this is the features, this is the benefit of the, to the, to the district and why we selected it. Here's the security systems, this is what it does individually, this is what it looks like from a district-wide standpoint, and, and, and get that to you. And I'm not talking about the 50-page document we have, but a nice page that describes a little bit more. Because we have, you know, there's been a lot of discussion that we've had. We've got a lot of thick reports that we've done, a lot of design has got into this. But we really don't have anything other than a phone system to you on it, so I can understand it. But I'm just from thinking about a timeline for the, that we have on some of these construction projects, that if it, if it would be acceptable, and that, that's just one way it could go, we would bring that, when we ask you to approve the...
When I bid on a government project for legal services, want to know enough, want to know that the people who are approving it know enough about it so that when it comes back to them, they aren't going to disapprove it. I, I mean, I, I don't want to bid on an RFP, and especially one like this, that I don't even know that the board will accept it. It seems to me that when we, when we send out an RFP, we want to be saying to them, put some time and effort into this because somebody's going to put $10,000, $20,000 worth of time into it, some four, and then they're going to expect that we're going to, even though we're not bound to, that we're going to take, take the best proposal. So I think it's a mistake to use the RFP process to find out if we're going to even accept some, something.
Chair Delgert, we could, we could bring this back, and Mr. Ron Corp, maybe we could visit before then and make sure that we're bringing back...
I mean, I really have confidence that you're doing the right thing, but it just seems unusual to have something this sparse for a project this size that's approved by the board.
And the bottom line is, the question, and you said it, as an administration, and that's me doing, everybody knows that, do you have to turn yours off?
I can't.
So the, the bottom line is, as an administration, things have been presented to us, and we have comfort level with certain things. We just need to make sure that the board is comfortable. So we have some things to discuss, to make sure we present it. Like you said, it goes before Finance Committee, so we can bring it to Jeff and Finance Committee, the Chair of that again, and just make sure that everybody's on the same page.
If there's six board members who disagree with me, I'm not, I'm not going to cry. I just, it just feels funny.
I do just want to point out that it will potentially cause project delay, particularly with the administrative office building, to not have the RFPs released within the timeline. And that's something we can certainly work around if the board, you know, feels the need. But I do want to be in full transparency to put that out there.
Good. Mr. Chair? Okay. I was just going, and maybe I'm not quite understanding the point that Mr. Ron Corp is making, and I, I know you have considerably more experience in this than I do. But I'm satisfied in supporting this, moving for a request for proposals on these, knowing that our administration knows what it wants for telephone, wireless, and security systems. They could bring the description of the telephone system to me, and it wouldn't mean anything. I certainly wouldn't try to make corrections in what kind of a phone system that we're going to order. So maybe I'm just not understanding the real issue, but for me to support this, I think I said in my statement before, I have every confidence that our technology experts, along with our consultant, will design and send out a bid for a system that meets our needs in this district for a long time. I don't need to see what the technical aspects of that are going to be in order to approve this request that's before us. But maybe that's not the point. I, I don't know, and I don't know how other board members feel about that.
I, I see it, and I think Jerry would, I think what Jerry is questioning is more the process in and of itself. We've had situations in the past where we have approved RFPs, but we haven't seen the specs and the, and the, what we're actually bidding on, and it get, and it got changed on us. Between the time, after we approved the spec, after we approved the RFP, what came back to us wasn't the same, yet we didn't know that. So it's kind of like when, if we don't have that in front of us, then the RFP that we're sending out, we don't know what it is. We don't know if what comes back to us is what we approved in the first place. And is that what you're kind of getting at, Jerry, is the process?
I don't, I don't expect we're going to have another occurrence of that. So it's, but there's something between the specifications, which I don't want. I, I have no interest in that, and nothing. And to me, this is nothing. And, and I don't mean disparage, I know that, that you've got something over there, but why are you even asking for the board's approval? You see what I mean? It's, we're, there's, there should be something that encapsulates what it is that you're getting beyond phone system. And, and there, there must be a certain kind of phone system. I mean, when we bought phone systems in the office, there were three or four types. And the first decision we had to make is which kind. And, and it just seems like if the board is going to have any role at all, and you could make an argument that you have no role, that we ought to, there ought to be a high-level description of what it is that you're setting in motion. And again, I, I'm just one board member, so it shouldn't be run around just me.
Monica, did you?
I just want to say that I agree with Jerry, it's very vague, and I don't know what is, what you're asking.
Mr. Chair, so then my question would be, and I don't want to really argue this point either, but so then when, at the new high school, we do a request for proposals for the heating system, is that going to come to us with specifics about what that's going to be? It kind of sounds like maybe the Kennedy system should have, or maybe should have been reconsidered in some way. But is that what we expect to have at the board level?
Ordinarily, I think that that dialogue of the level of specificity that the board needs would take place in the Finance Committee. In other words, they would be coming and saying, here's what we've done to vet this, here's who we've listened to, and again, I'm sure you've listened to people. And, and then the committee would say, based on our experience as board members, we think this is what the board needs to know in order to do its business. And I would have thought this would, this project is big enough that it would have been maybe three or four pages or five pages, say, the philosophy behind the phone system is this, and here's the long-term cost implications of going in this direction. And, and again, we knew about your company, you come highly recommended. I, I don't have any, any doubt that you're, but there must have been some choices made. We're not getting rotary dials because they're, but we, I mean, there are some choices that have policy implications. And it would, it would feel better if, if we knew a little bit of that.
And we'll be glad to break those back. Shannon?
This might be a kind of a side conversation or question. I have some questions about the video surveillance. What, a couple of them. What is a district-wide solution look like for video surveillance? Is, is it that we have similar videos, surveillance, they're all the same? Or is there a hub at the DOA office, or DAO office? And then my other question is, what, at Tech High School specifically, what does our video surveillance vision look like? And how does that compare to what we have at Apollo?
Okay, I, I can't talk specifically about how it compares to Apollo, but I can tell you, the, the video design and the way we, because if we were doing it all, we would centralize your storage. That's the most efficient way to do it. But we're not doing it all, and we can't buy that big of a server for just these three locations. So we've made a decision that we're going to have the video storage at each individual building. So we'll buy servers that store that video there. From a centralized standpoint, I want to be able to have one place that I can view everything, and it looks like one system. I don't have to, if, if there's an event that's happening at Apollo, I want to be able to get to that right away. I don't want to have to log in separately and do all this stuff. It should look like one, so I can manage that effectively. So that you can have a, you know, you might have your security or somebody have an iPad and be able to look at any, if they are authorized to look at anything like that. So it's managed that way. Where we've decided on camera placement, and it's, we did put a, one of my recommendations is that, that the district board does a review of a policy as to where you determine you want to have cameras. We have worked mainly on entrances, exits, where there's student exchange, bus areas, corridors, and where you have high assets. And so we prioritize some of those locations. At this stage, what we've done is made sure we have cable in those locations. We are looking for pricing for that, for the cameras and things. We're going to see how that fits the budget. And then I really think you need to, there should be, at some point in time, especially as it expands, this is our policy, this is why we decided to put cameras where they are. So if there's an incident, you can say, we thought this through. And so that's, that's, in, in general, that's what it is. It's very similar video design that we would have done across the country in, in K-12.
And is it, how does it compare to, or other buildings? So if, if you put this together, the Tech, the District Office and Quarry View, what were their video surveillance? Will there be a big difference, a significant difference between them?
Yes. Our, our current systems were put in around 1998. They're analog systems. A lot has changed in the, in the meantime. They've been upgraded, new video recorders, that type of thing, some new cameras, but, but this is a, a digital system, access from mobile devices. Storage is different. Quality and clarity is, is much better now. Until we would get all of the, the systems upgraded, there would be a difference, yes.
And I think the other difference, and this industry is really changing over the last couple of years, just with the, the things that are going on, the, the rapid change in technology. I mean, every three months, there's a new camera that comes out, which is why that discount is important to us. Because we, for example, Tech, I'm not sure what cameras we'll end up putting in there, but we want to put the best available at the time. And, but, but the discipline or the, the thought that goes in, where you put these cameras, what you want to see and what you're trying to do with them, is much more developed. So when we look at areas, we've got a lot more experience. Back in, when this was put in, you just put cameras in places you thought that that might work. There's just been a lot more best practices developed over time to help us try to make sure that if you got a camera, it's going to be a tool you can use.
Bruce?
So is time a concern here? I mean, do you need an approval in order to keep projects moving on time?
In order to, to go with the timelines we have, the feedback that we had received from the project and construction managers working, and the high school is, is less of a concern time-wise, but it's more so with Quarry View and the district administrative offices that have summer completion dates. There's wiring and things that intertwine. have summer completion dates, there's wiring and things that intertwine with this. But at the same time, you know, by no means would we ask the board to approve something they're not comfortable approving.
I was going to just ask if it could be, if the details of it could be referred to the new high school building project committee, if that would be something that they could be reviewing. But I understand what Mr. Von Korf is alluding to, is the fact that as the board, the school board, I guess maybe it's our responsibility to, to, to vote on this certainly, but I don't know what kind of a heating system we have at Coreyview right now, or what we will have at Tech, and I doubt that I ever will totally understand it. So I trust the, the administrators in charge of making those decisions, so that's.
Well, and this is an RFP, it's not a expenditure. We're not authorizing any expenditure this evening, but I understand where Jerry's coming from, too. I had a couple of questions that I may ask. Number one, these will be, and these are included in, so like, the Tech High School security system and phone system are included in Bid PAC four, five? There, or is?
So, it's a little bit different with each of these technologies, because you have some construction going on. So at Tech, the wireless access points and the phone system are owner-provided, and not a part of a construction project. Security system is a part of the construction project. Part of my deliverables for the district is that you have a Division 27, Division 28 specification, that's a construction specification, that's based on your standard, that allows you, in any construction project from now until whenever, you can insert that, and it will adhere to whatever the result of this RFP is, so that we can fold that under the construction process and have the construction manager, you know, they mark it up a little bit, but that's what they do to, in order to manage that project. So it will be, I'm not sure what number that's going to be a part of, but we'll have that, that taken care of, we'll have the specifications. We, in our office, it's a little unusual in that I am a consultant that is a district consultant. We have, also have been retained by your architects to write the, the specifications that go as a part of the construction. So we've been talking a lot in this process, and we understand they're different things, but we wanted to come up with a process that would work for both of them.
A second, are we, are we, so.
This is kind of what confused me, the, this says the request for proposal will be available at the webpage, and I understand that the practice is not to put them on the webpage until we've approved them, but are they already ready? Or are you going to, in other words, if we wanted to see them, could we see them? Or are they still yet to be drafted?
I mean, we were planning on posting them tomorrow, so there's a couple of minor changes that have to be done pending your approval, but it is, they are certainly things that we could, would get out to you.
Yeah, okay.
My second question was going to be, the, the system that's being installed is, is a system that is able to work back with the current systems? So my, my question is, are we downgrading any systems in order to have compatibility with existing systems? If we, if you just had a blank slate, would you be installing a more current system than what you're recommending to us? Because it has to be back.
The simple answer to that is no, and I can talk about, because defining compatibility, like for example, in card access, there's really no management compatibility, but we will have it so you can use the same card, you know, so it's transparent to the users. There's going to be two systems, two systems got to be managed, but in no way are we making compromises to the new technology to connect to the old. We are going to connect the phone system to the old one, so you can still have reduced digit dialing and that sort of thing, but the only component that we're reducing is that physical connection, and it just adapts the new systems to the old. So there's really no compromises made, we made, we felt real strongly about that. I think it's important, when we look at these technologies, we spend a lot of time looking at what it takes to manage them. That's why I'm really big on this whole district-wide solution. It would have been easily for me to come in and say, hey, I'm going to write RFPs for those three locations and walk away. I believe that you need to look at something that's going to last as long as possible when a school district invests it, and that has the, the, the amount of time it takes to manage it is reduced, because that, that's an expensive resource for the district, and expect, when it relates to technology, boy, that's just, a lot of that stuff's coming, and there's always more stuff to manage. I want to make sure we do it in a way that's real easy to manage.
Thinking out loud, could I propose a, maybe a solution to this? If it would help, I mean, I chair the Finance Committee, that's only three people, but if you had the stuff available, with the board willing, I mean, we could schedule another finance meeting, chew on it for an hour and a half, that'd be the only topic on the table, and then if it wouldn't screw up your timelines, we could come back at the next board meeting and have action as a board, if, if that clears up some of the questions Jerry was asking.
I think what I'm going to do, Jeff, I think what I'm going to do at this point is, right now, in front of me, I've got a, a recommendation from the administration that we approve the RFPs to move forward in this process, and I'm going to put that out on the table and look for a motion on that. If anyone disagrees with that or wants to make a motion to table this until a later meeting, then I would ask for that motion to table it. But I'm looking for a motion to proceed with what's on the agenda.
Yes.
I'd like to make that motion to proceed with what's on the table. Does that define the motion well enough?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to proceed with what's on the agenda. Is there anyone that would want to, yes, Mr. Von Korf?
We'll move to table to the earliest possible time that the board can meet to see the, something in more detail.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second that.
So we have a motion and a second to table?
No, we have to, what are, how do we deal with this? Don't we deal with the first motion first?
The table overrides the first motion, and then we would, if, we will vote on to table it, and if that would fail, then that would reseed, resend back into the original motion. So I believe that's correct, if I, okay, thank you. So what we have then on the table is a motion to, to table this until the next time that the board could meet. Now, Jerry, would, would, are you looking, talking for a special meeting, or?
I, I, to facilitate this, I'd meet on Monday, I'd meet on Tuesday, whenever we can do a special meeting, you know, and we, we don't debate a motion to table, so, but when do we, never. The motion is to table to a, the earliest possible time after we can see the appropriate detail.
So that's a motion and a second on the table. Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
I'm going to call a roll out to Chair.
I just need more explanation, what is the earliest possible time? So what are we, are we tabled into whenever we have a next meeting?
I would expect that the, that the Chair would consult with the superintendent and attempt to find a time that facilitates the process, and, but not to schedule the motion when people can't meet, that's typically when you give.
Yeah, it would require for the information to be provided, and then we would have to have a proper notification, so we can, so we can notice the meeting, which is generally, is that three days?
Three days.
So it'd be three days after we would have the proper note, proper, after we'd have the information. Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
Maker of the motion, Jerry Von Korf?
Yes.
Second maker of the motion, Monica Segooda-Schwarz?
Yes.
Bruce Hensis?
No.
Bruce Moes?
No.
Al Dahlgren?
No.
Jeff Polriss?
Yes.
Monica, I mean, excuse me, Shannon Haas?
Yes.
So we've, we have voted to table this then until more information can be provided to board members, and then at that point, I'll consult with Willie, and we'll set up a time, probably would likely be early next week, when the board can get together and we can hold a vote on this. And will that be, that should be satisfactory, so that there wouldn't be delays in construction projects?
Yeah, we'll review the, the calendars and look at how the, amount of time that the RFP, RFPs are intended to be released. I don't know, maybe there's some flexibility with shortening that, we'll just have to look at those timelines. And we'll have that information when we plan to meet next week.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is review and approval of tentative contract agreements. Tracy Bow.
Good evening, Chair Dahlgren, Superintendent Jett, and board members. We're back talking about contracts and employee guidelines to be settled for this evening. As you know, we've got nine bargaining units in the district and three non-represented groups. I'm bringing for your review and approval tonight, two bargaining groups and three of the non-represented groups. I'll start with a presentation of the bargaining groups. You all have these packets, there we go. We reached a tentative agreement with the bus drivers. The bus drivers is a unit of 30 employees, 23.63 FTE. The tentative agreement includes the following for year one, a 2% increase in wages for bus drivers and mechanics, new starting pay rates then would move with that 2% to 1550 for van drivers, bus drivers at 1581, assistant mechanics at 1681, and mechanics at 1781. And just for board members' information, those two mechanic positions used to reside in the custodial bargaining unit. We did a joint unit clarification with the three, with the two bargaining units in the district, and, and those positions moved to the transportation department. In addition, this unit participated in the MOU with the district at the beginning of the plan year, and so they received the 5% increase in district insurance contributions, and then we removed a 20-year longevity step in their contract. In year two of the contract, the tentative agreement provides for a 2.5% salary increase for bus drivers and mechanics, including any van drivers that were hired before September 4th of 2017. That moves those starting pay rates to 1550 for van drivers, 1621 for bus drivers, 1723 for the assistant mechanic, and 1826 for the mechanic. And then the trip pay is moved from $12 per hour to $13 per hour. The total two-year cost of this tentative agreement is 5.05%. The costing sheet is on the back of your handout, and I'm looking for a motion to approve that tentative agreement.
Looking for a motion to approve?
Chair, I will move approval of the bus driver's contract.
Looking for a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, any discussion? Jerry?
I want to say this to encompass the whole thing, we've been doing bargaining for, I've been involved since 2004. Every year, in the last several years, the process goes more smoothly, the heartache, the tension diminishes. I don't think that either side is bargaining harder or less hard than in the past, but I think it's a testament to the leadership of the superintendent and the HR and the folks who are bargaining, all are. And then the other day, we had a meet and confer that I was invited to attend, and I kind of geared up for a, you know, a tough emotional process, and again, that process was constructive and collaborative and thoughtful, and still, everybody got their, their, their two cents in. Everybody was as firm as they would have been back in the old days, just in a more respectful and collaborative way, and I just, I think it's, I wish I could take credit for it, but the credit is, is, is over here and, and, and on the other side. So I support all of these things, but I just wanted to say how exciting it is to see that, that progress that we're making.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
Maker of the, maker of the motion, Bruce Hensis?
Yes.
Second maker of the motion, Monica Segooda-Schwarz?
Yes.
Bruce Moes, yes.
Al Dahlgren?
Yes.
Jeff Polriss?
Yes.
Shannon Haas?
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf?
Yes.
Okay, the next tentative agreement is with the Sign Language Interpreters of the district. This is a small bargaining unit, 8.75 FTE, and about 10 employees. The year one package for this agreement is 2.0% increase in hourly wages for the certified staff of the unit, and again, the 5% increase in district contributions to single and family plans. In year two of the agreement, it's a 1.5% increase in hourly wages for certified staff, and an addition of longevity steps to their contract, at 75 cents per hour for years 10 through 14, $1.25 for years 15 through 19, and $1.75 for 20-plus years. The total two-year cost of this tentative agreement is 4.90%. Again, the cost sheet is on the back of your handout, and I'm looking for a motion to approve this agreement.
I move to approve the agreement for Sign Language Interpreter Contract.
So we have a motion, Monica, a second?
I second the motion.
Second, Bruce. Any discussion on this one? Seeing no discussion, Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
Maker of the motion, Monica Segooda-Schwarz?
Yes.
Second maker of the motion, Bruce Moes?
Yes.
Shannon Haas?
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf?
Yes.
Jeff Polriss?
Yes.
Al Dahlgren?
Yes.
Bruce Hensis?
Yes.
Okay, next is the first of the non-represented groups that we'll review this evening, the non-represented hourly employee group. This is a large group of employees, 129.85 FTE, and approximately 165 employees. They are in positions across the district, from the DAO to our classrooms, as bilingual communicates, communication support specialists, and BSSs, and behavior resource specialists, and a wide variety of other positions. In year one, this is a proposal, again, not a bargaining unit, a proposal from the administration that is equitable with the other bargaining group settlements that we've made to date. 1.5% change in hourly wages for, for all members of the group. There are three members of this group that have been redlined since we did a pay study in 2010, 11, and we're proposing a $750 one-time pay for those three employees that remain redlined and will probably be out of that by the next contract period. Also, the 5% increase in district insurance contributions was passed forward to the non-represented groups. One additional vacation day to take them to a total of 21 days for employees with 16 or more years of longevity with the school district, and that is to match the same benefit in another bargaining unit. And then in year two of the guidelines, a 2% increase in the hourly wages, and again, that one-time pay for three redlined employees. And I'm looking for a motion to approve the changes in wages and benefits with the non-represented hourly group.
Mr. Chair, as a board representative for this bargaining group, I approve to accept this contract.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, are there any, is there any discussion? Jeff?
Could you explain redline for me? Is it, is it seeing the comp worth?
No, we did a pay study in 2010 and 11, and, and then reorganized some of the lane structure of this, these pay guidelines, based on the pay study that was done. And so when we shifted folks into the, what the wage study suggested is the proper wage lane, they were, had been in a higher lane, and were being paid at a rate that was higher than the lane that they were placed in.
And now this is catching up?
And so they were held at that pay rate until the wage range catches up to them.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? If not, Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
Maker of the motion, Bruce Moes, yes. Second maker of the motion, Monica Segooda-Schwarz?
Yes.
Bruce Hensis?
Yes.
Al Dahlgren?
Yes.
Jeff Polriss?
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf?
Yes.
Shannon Haas?
Yes.
Okay, the next non-represented group is the non-represented exempt employee group. This is a group of 13 employees, eight of these are licensed coordinators, largely working in the teaching and learning department, as well as department heads and supervisors in the district. The proposal for... The proposal for resolving the wage issues with this group is to do a $1,000 salary increase for all members of the group who are employed prior to January 1, 2017. There's also, we did, we set some new wage guidelines that were more specific for the different kinds of positions in this group. And two of our licensed coordinators were, were slightly below the $65,000 bottom range in, in those positions. And so we're proposing to move those two people up to the, to the bottom of that pay range. And then the 5% increase again in district insurance contributions to single and family plans. In year two, there would be a $1,200 salary increase for all members who were employed prior to January 1, 2018. Total two-year cost of this proposal is 3.20%. Again, the specific cost sheet is on the backside, and we're looking for a motion to approve this wage and benefit package.
Mr. Chair, as a board representative, I make that motion.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Moes, call roll.
Maker of the motion, Bruce Moes, yes. Second maker of the motion, Monica Seguda-Schwarz?
Yes.
Shannon Haas?
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf?
Yes.
Jeff Polrize?
Yes.
Al Doggins?
Yes.
Bruce Henshess?
Yes.
And the last nonrepresented group is the executive director contracts, which includes seven employees, the assistant superintendent and the executive directors. The salary increases for those groups are as follows, and there's specific pay changes for each of those positions as they're all individual contracts. So for the assistant superintendent in year one, 1,500. For the executive director of human resources, 1,500 change. Executive director of student services, 1,500. For the executive director of operations, a 5,500 change as a market adjustment to reflect the new role of that position as it was reorganized earlier this year. For the executive director of teaching and learning, the executive director of business services, those are new executives to the team this year, and so they would remain at the, at the salary that was approved by the board at the time of their hire at $120,000 each. The executive director of community education is, community education is currently led by principal on special assignment. He has been offered the position of executive director and accepted that pending board approval. And so we're proposing a contract beginning February 1st for him at the same salary that he's making as a principal on special assignment, and again, the 5% increase in district insurance contributions. In year two, it would, we propose an, an increase of $2,000 for each of the executives on the team. Total two-year cost of this package is 2.94%. Again, the cost sheet is on the back, and I'm looking for a motion to approve this recommendation.
I also move. Second.
So what are we approving? We're approving?
The salary levels. We're going to be incorporating those salary levels that you approved tonight into the individual contracts for each of the executives. Those will be reviewed again by personnel as we're finalizing some of the contract language, and then the execution of those contracts will be brought back to the board for approval.
So we're approving the salary portion. That would be effective, well, it'd be effective back to the?
Retroactive to July 1st.
Retro, but effective immediately.
Yes.
And then the contracts will come back to us?
Yes, and, and at the direction of the personnel committee or the chair, those could come back on the consent agenda once they've come through the personnel committee with a recommendation and then are shared with the board for full review.
Okay. And I don't think it will happen, but what would happen if we said no to the contracts? How would we reconcile?
I, well, I think then you'd have to approve a change in what you've approved tonight. My understanding was the personnel committee was prepared to support and recommend the changes in salary while the language issues of the contract are completed.
Yeah, I can, that's what we're discussing.
No, I, I know that that, that they did, but my question is, how do, how do you reconcile that? Say, say that we did not approve the contract. There was something about the contract, we said, no, we're not going to approve that.
I think I can answer that.
Then how do you, yes, Chair?
All the employees on these groups, they all have salary levels for next year. Some of them may not be here. And, I mean, we're really, and we're talking process here, not, but, but if, if, if the executive director of human resources refused to accept the, the contract language, this wouldn't stop her, and, and this is the salary for that.
If I can say that in another way, the, the contracts are for each person, and what we're approving right now are the range of salary for the positions.
The salary is retroactive. The language might be done in a couple of weeks. I mean, it's just a language cleanup?
Yes.
What's the harm in delaying it to the board meeting?
It seems very similar, it seems very similar to what we just put something, tabled something for. Not having the complete information prior to approving it. So, I, I don't know. It seems to, it's very screwy to me. It just, how do you do something like this? How do you approve the, the, the financial package without approving the contract? I don't understand that.
Mr. Chair, is this colloquy here part of the discussion? There's a motion and a second on the table. Are we in discussion now to the motion and the second?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you?
No, I'm just, I'm just wondering how this surfaced here, so.
Could I just ask the question, why, what is holding up the settlement of the contracts?
We have a redlined contract with a clause that's?
There was a clause that was?
The superintendent is working on, the personnel committee is working on, we left, and we wanted, we wanted these units and the remaining to, to see that the board has approved salaries improvement that's at a Spartan level and percentage-wise, and that, that we're not doing what they worry that we're going to do, which is to treat one group disproportionately. So it was a way to reaffirm our commitment to be a fairer across bargaining groups.
And this recommendation is coming from the personnel committee on this particular?
Any further discussion? Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
Maker of the motion, Jerry Von Korf?
Yes.
Second maker, Monica Seguda-Schwarz?
Yes.
Bruce Henshess?
Yes.
Al Doggins?
On procedure, I have to say no.
Bruce Moes, yes. Jeff Polrize?
Well, due to what Al said, no.
Jerry Von Korf, Shannon Haas?
No.
You're going to give me two votes?
It's passed.
Do you want to announce the result of that? Is that, is that a pass?
Four, three, pass.
Thank you very much.
No, I was just fooling around. Yes, I got, I got called twice.
Uh, next. There are no more contracts, correct? No, okay. So next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Mr. Willie Jett.
Good evening, Chair Doggins, members of the board. This week is paraprofessional week by proclamation of Governor Mark Ditten. I'd like to extend a thank you to all of our paraprofessionals who dedicate their time and energy to the St. Cloud area school district. I'd also like to say congratulations to Apollo math teacher Gene Michael, who is a candidate for Minnesota Teacher of the Year. We wish you well in this, you wish you well in all of your successes. I'd also like to recognize Courtney Donnelly and Josh Metal, Tech AAA award winners, and this is for excellence in academics, arts, and athletics. District 742 held its second annual 742 Education Expo on January 6th, and many of people who are here in this room were present. It was kicking off our kindergarten enrollment and preschool registration. Families from the area enjoyed meeting their principals and school staff. They learned about District 742 programs and had fun with activities such as robots, tools, 3D printers, art stations, and climbing the bus. Local businesses and organizations joined in on the fun. The Science Museum of Minnesota's Engineering Assembly performed interactive demonstrations. We had junior Tiger gymnastics. They showed off their outstanding technique. We had the Leaf Pack Wrap Bus, and they displayed their mobile library. Kids jumped around in Air Max bounce houses and were able to climb aboard St. Cloud Fire Department trucks, St. Cloud Police Cars, and Gold Cross ambulances. The main stage featured Kennedy Orchestra students and Allison Fay from the Jacob Wetterling Resource Center and wellness demonstrations from District Student Services. The bottom line, it was a great community event, and it showcased all the different community partnerships that we have. Kindergarten enrollment is underway through Monday, January 29th. All students enrolling in kindergarten, including language immersion, for the 2018-19 school year can enroll online or at the Welcome Center located in Midtown Square, or Midtown Square Mall. In honoring of celebrating 100 years of Tech Technical High School, students, staff, and community members joined in the time-honored tradition of creating a time capsule. Principal Charlie Eisenreich welcomed those in attendance, and the Tech Band and Choir performed the National Anthem. Board member Bruce Moes commented on the year of celebrating Tech's 100-year anniversary. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Marcia Beisch and Mayor Dave Kleist remarked on the importance of the day in honoring St. Cloud and the district's history. And students from Tech High School took turns putting the items in the capsule, and it was in the newspaper, St. Cloud Times. And each item was described to the attendees as they were lowered into the capsule. And our Tiger Build students sealed the capsule while the Tech Band performed Tech's alma mater. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you. Next, we move into our standing committee reports. First up is Board Development, Policy, and Governance Committee, Shannon Haas.
The Board Development, Policy, and Governance Committee met this past Tuesday, January 23rd, and we discussed one single topic was booster clubs within our district. We're moving forward with Bruce Henshess meeting with Marcia and creating a, a district policy regarding booster clubs. At this point in time, we don't have a standalone policy, and we do have one of our high schools with some booster club guidelines, but not the other high schools. So we're looking through recommendations of the Activities Ad-Hoc Committee coming forward and then having a standalone policy for our booster clubs.
Next would be the Community Linkages and Engagement Committee, Bruce Moes.
Chair, the committee met on January 11th. Minutes are before you. We had a presentation, linkage presentation by PFSS, Partners for Student Success. The various elements of that presentation are listed in the minutes, as well as the accompanying PFSS presentation outline. And we are scheduled to meet again on February 8th with a new presenter in the area of community engagement. Recently attended the Habitat for Humanity House dedication, and that is a program in which the school district is very, very helpful and, and partners with them in many, many ways, including the, many times that the Tiger Build organization from Tech High School has helped in that construction of those homes. We had a, a presentation, two, three board members here, Jeff Polrize, Bruce Henshess, and myself attended a event at Madison School last Monday, and we had a chance to interact with parents and staff members on that particular event. And it was scheduled for tomorrow, an engagement meeting with Mayor Rick Schultz of St. Joseph. Members Henshess, Seguda-Schwarz, and myself were to meet and have a conversation with the mayor, and he has had to postpone that, and we will reschedule that for sometime in February. That's my report.
Thank you. Next is Finance and Audit, Jeff Polrize.
Board members, we met this morning. Present there was myself, Amy Scullard, Willie Jett, Al Doggins, Gronn, Andreasen was a community member, board member Monica Segura-Schwarz. We did have some discussion on the finance study group meetings. We currently meet quarterly. There was discussion that maybe we could have a meeting twice a year based around when more robust information was available to present to the public, so there's going to be some continuing work on that, and we'll get back to you. We did talk about, Willie came and talked to the committee about a gymnastics space update. Willie and Amy recently met with Mike Spanier, Joel Starr, Cause, gymnastics coach, and someone from Inventure Properties to discuss options for gymnastics place. Inventure Properties is interested in purchasing an existing site or building on a site and then leasing that back to the school district. Gymnastics coach seemed happy with some of the, some of his possible sites. Inventure Properties representative will put some numbers together, and the group will meet again. A lease levy would be an option for the cost of this lease space, or at least a portion of it. Next one, we talked about, Amy talked about the Tech High School change order process. There's going to be many, many change orders coming, as there always is with big project, big projects. Discussion whether the board should be approving Amy's approval to change order instead of the order itself. Suggestions were made that the board give Amy the approval to approve change orders under $100,000 to expedite, expedite certain things that are more time-sensitive. Further discussion will come back before us with that. We did bring up a discussion on open enrollment for kids coming in or out of the district. I asked what is being done in the past, what's done presently. It seemed pretty good. We did have a discussion, maybe to gather some more information about how the students, we either get them to return to our district or not leave in the first place. Last but not least, we did talk a lot about the long-term facilities maintenance projects as we discussed tonight at the board meeting. Thank you.
And on those change orders, we weren't necessarily giving Amy permission to approve change orders under $100,000. It's just that most change orders that come to them, if they aren't, I mean, it's kind of an on-the-fly type thing, and if they don't approve them at that time, construction stops until that approval would occur. And so we've kind of said that we need to have some, we didn't, I don't know, we, was it $100,000 we picked? But we just, we picked, we picked, we just said we need to have a number where we can say, you know, it's, without calling the, the committee in or the board in, they can continue through with those change orders, so. Next up would be the Legislative Committee, and that's Bruce Henshess.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and board members, I put our minutes in front of everybody's place there this evening. Our School Board Legislative Committee stayed the same this year, our, yeah, for this year in, with membership, and it includes the board members Haas, Polrize, and Peter Hamelick. We did meet on January 19th. Our first topic was the first item on our legislative agenda, and that's the special education cross subsidy. I had been unable to be at our January 10th school board meeting, and so I listened to the audio recording, and Jeff and Shannon and I discussed that. We would like to thank Mr. Von Korf for your excellent presentation on the cross subsidy information for the legislators, and again, to thank the legislators for being there at our invitation. From that discussion, we went into our strategy regarding addressing the special education cross subsidy at the legislative level this year. And so on the sheet in front of you, we have kind of the, the order in which we see this best to approach. And the first is to ask the legislature to pay for the cross subsidy. The problem is, it's not a funding year, and they won't anyway, probably. Now, that's a little bit of a, you know, off-the-cuff remark, but that certainly is what the legislature should do, is pay for the special education cross subsidy. Second would be, if they won't pay for it, eliminate all the mandates that drive the cross subsidy, and they can't do that, and they shouldn't do that. I don't think even we would want them to because they are needed for kids with special needs. And so our third strategy then would be to ask that they allow school boards to levy for the cross subsidy. To give that levy an authority to local school boards if they aren't going to do their part to fund the cross subsidy. In our referendum a couple of years ago, we had a figure of $38 million for funding building updates at Apollo High School. The estimated cost to the average property owner of $150,000 home was $4 a month to fund a $38 million capital project. We have an $11 million cross subsidy. We have an $11 million cross subsidy. So you can figure what the cost to the local taxpayers would be and yet we sit unable to do many of the programs that we have discussed and again that Jerry has laid out that we could be doing if we were not carrying a cross subsidy. And so perhaps St. Cloud could be a pilot for a levy to pay for the cross subsidy if the state and federal governments are not going to do it. And then fourthly would be if they aren't going to do any of that or allow us that authority, then at least equalize the cross subsidy amongst school districts so that districts like St. Cloud are not carrying a larger than other cross subsidy. We move from that to a discussion about the AMSD Legislative Preview, which is coming up on February 2nd. Representatives Knoblock and Tice have both agreed to attend. In fact, we plan to ride down together, which again, we really respect and appreciate their willingness to, to hear about the important educational issues. Clearly, the Special Education Cross Subsidy is the number one legislative issue for AMSD as well as this district and so they will hear more about that. Our next topic was the Cruz-Gooseman Supreme Court Arguments. I don't know if any board members had a chance to listen to it. Mr. Von Korf, did you have a chance to watch it or not?
No, I couldn't, I couldn't bear to listen.
Well, it was on January 9th and I was sitting in a hospital in Minneapolis, not for myself, but nothing else to do, so I did watch it on my computer. And I would say this, by their questioning, it was very clear that the Supreme Court has serious reservations about the trend towards segregated schools in Minnesota. The justices repeatedly asked the question, can you have equal education in segregated schools? The state attorney could not answer that question and did not answer it after repeated questions. If the court agrees with the plaintiffs, the case will go back to the district court level to address the segregation issues that were raised in the case. And obviously, this case has drawn local as well as nationwide attention because of the significance of the potential decision for the plaintiffs. And you may have seen it in the St. Cloud Times not long ago, a headline article that U.S. Charter Schools Put Growing Numbers in Racial Isolation. And I just want to read a short sentence from that, or paragraph, that says, "Desegregation works; nothing else does," said Daniel Schuman, Minnesota Civil Rights Attorney. There is no amount of money that you can put into segregated schools that is going to make them equal." And so it'll be interesting to see how the Supreme Court ultimately rules in that decision. And then lastly, the other policy platform topic that we addressed is our goal number three, which said, evaluate the use of assessments and high stakes testing. Couple of months ago, Mr. Von Korf recommended a book and I don't know how many other board members have had a chance to pick up this book, Measuring Up What Educational Testing Really Tells Us by Daniel Koretz. He's a Harvard mathematics professor who understands educational testing. And I have read the book and now it seems that he has written another book that I have ordered, but I haven't been able to get yet. The name of his new book is The Testing Charade: Pretending to Make Schools Better. And in it, to just take a quote from his review for his book, or the review for his book, says that Koretz, one of our nation's foremost experts on educational testing, argues that the whole idea of testing-based accountability has failed, is harmful to students, and shows little evidence of leading to educational improvements. So I look forward to seeing what he has to say in his book, but I think that our legislative goal number three is on target, that as a state, educational leaders need to take a hard look at what we're accomplishing with our system of high stakes testing. So that takes care of the topics that our Legislative Committee discussed.
Thank you. Next, Achievement, Integration, and Equity, oh, I'm sorry, Personnel and Negotiations, Monica Segura Schwartz.
Hello, Chair and members of the board. We discussed, we were looking, we met in January 17th and we were looking at the recommendations that you got today for the negotiations. We were reviewing all of them and we also reviewed the contracts, had a discussion about one of the language and one of the contracts and were asked for clarification and changing in the language in that specification that is going to come to us later. And that was, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is Achievement, Integration, and Equity, Jerry Von Korf.
The committee chair was snowed in Atlanta and another member had family emergency and so that left one member to cancel the meeting wisely. And so I have no report. I'll just say what an honor it is when someone reads a book that you recommend and so I am honored that you would, you would take my recommendation and in return, I will, I will read your recommendation. I would just, I would just say that from the first book, Professor Koretz is an advocate for using standardized testing. That standardized testing, he believes tells us, gives us a lot of information and is important to be used. The issue is not whether we use standardized testing because after all, standardized testing, when it's done properly, is more valid and more accurate than testing that you just make up on the fly. The issue is whether, how we're using it to evaluate how schools are doing in the way that we are.
Absolutely. Thank you. Next on the agenda is future agenda items. At this time, Board of Education members may suggest items or topics for future board meeting agendas. At the February, at the February Work Session, we're going to have a update on the new Tech High School. We'll also have a core review Education Center update, future District Administration Offices update, so three facilities updates. We will have a session on school climate and bullying prevention and we will have an equity update.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I recommend something?
Yes.
Last March, the architects of our new high school told the board that if the board came with a recommendation to include a gymnastic gym in the new high school, by this March, it could be included and ready pretty much by the opening of the school. I would like to request that we, on our board agenda, have a discussion of that topic and that we invite the gymnastics people to attend. And I would just like to say the reasons why I think it's important at this time for us to have an open and public discussion of that. And I've got just five quick that I'll mention. One is the gymnastics program at Tech High School is an attractor program. Gymnastics is a athletic activity, educational athletic activity that can bring new people, new students into our district, just like the immersion programs are attractor academic programs that can bring new kids into our district. Two, the tech program is a model program. It is one of the top in the state of Minnesota and a program that we as a district cannot afford to lose, in my opinion, not just for our own self-interest, but for the interest of those students. Three, it would be if we decide to lease space and move the program off campus, it would be the only program, academic or activities, that is in the old Tech building and will not have a home on campus in the new Tech High School. And one of our focuses of our new high school is the fact that we are bringing everybody home, kind of onto campus. Everybody that was there previously and many that were not able to be on campus. Four, I think we need to think about Title IX and facilities, equality between male and female athletes and the impact that having a gymnastics gym in our new school has on our standing in that area. And lastly, a gym space once built is there forever. If for some reason the program would go away, it would be very easy for us to remodel at a very low price that space into a space that would be usable by other gym classes and truly the space can be used during the school day for other programs. And so those are the reasons I just feel strongly we need to have a very public discussion of what's best for that program and for the district while we still can make a decision as a board regarding that program.
We'll take that under consideration and discuss that at Agenda Planning.
Okay.
I would make one correction, though. I don't believe that the architects ever said that if we made a decision by this, they said that if a decision was made to build a new gymnastics facility, it would be possible to construct it within the timeframe so that it would be ready at the opening of the new high school. But they never, just never said anything about including it in the current tech package. It was, they always said it was a completely separate project.
Did I say it would be included in the current, I meant it would be included, it would be concluded at the same time as the rest of the.
Yes, but it would have to be financed and done separately, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If, if, if it's going to get put on the agenda, I think a great deal of thought should be given to what it is that we are asking the superintendents' people do to bring us the information. I'm not, I'm not arguing against considering it, but if it just comes to the board and we have a raw discussion about gymnastics, we all favor gymnastics, I think, I think at this stage, if we're going to be capable of doing what you're asking, which sounds like approving something, we need, we need something, something beyond just the gymnastics topic.
And I think that's a legitimate request and it would seem to me that we're at time now to make a final and public decision regarding what we're going to do with that program. And I think that it should be made with the gymnastics people knowing that that's the topic that's on the agenda and that there's going to be a recommendation and the board will discuss it and then it will be decided.
Bruce.
Mr. Henches, thank you. Can I just ask you for just a little bit further clarification? What is meant by gymnastics people when we have a public discussion?
Okay.
Is that a theater or is that a, are we bringing people there to engage in a discussion of, of a level of, you know?
I guess I, I think, I guess what I was thinking in my mind would be coaches, activities directors, and that the public would know what the topic is going to be so that if they have an interest in gymnastics, they may want to be there to hear, not that they would have input at that point, but.
And I appreciate that and I'm just, you know where I'm going a little bit on this because it is, sometimes we have to be careful that we don't engage in just a theater of this and, and all people are very respectfully invited. But I, I do best when I hear arguments and rationales that are presented in a fashion by people that have some expertise in, in what this is about and not just, I feel, really, I want this or something like that. I'm just, I'm just involving in this notion here of having that, my point of view on that.
Yes, I understand.
But Mr. Chair, that kind of emphasizes my position. I'm going to vote the same way. I'm, the 200 gymnastic people are welcome to come. They have every right to come and, and if, if I were to vote no on something, it would make it 200 times more painful. But really, what, what is going to drive for me is to have a number and a plan. And so I don't know what the, we're almost to the point, if we're going to have a meaningful discussion, to have the Agenda Committee require or somebody to require what the plan would look like or at that meeting to order that there be a plan because I don't think we can vote on, maybe we can vote on the sentiment that we want a plan or something, but we need something more than just, we like gymnastics, it seems to me. Maybe the Finance Committee can work on this, but.
It, well, the Finance Committee has kind of been, been, but like other issues that come to the board, there would be an administrative recommendation, I presume, in terms of how we're going to move forward and.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
They would provide the background to that recommendation, but, and I'm not looking to have the gymnastics people there for theater because I think we all would vote on a topic based on how we feel about it, not based on how many people are sitting in the stands watching it.
Are you looking, I mean, you started out by saying March, it's January. Were you talking about sometime soon in the future or were you talking about at the next workshop in Jan, in February, you think that that discussion should take place? Because I can, I can guarantee you, there's a lot of things going on concerning gymnastics and a lot of efforts being put forth. They may not fall in line with what Bruce Henches wants to do with gymnastics and they may not fall in line with what Jerry wants to do with gymnastics. I, I don't know, but I know there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes or, you know, it's not, it certainly hasn't been dropped off the radar of the superintendent's office.
Well, the topic has been out there for several years now and, and a year ago, the architects kind of drew the line in the sand for us. Make a decision. If you want to have this included, and again, maybe included, not the word, but finished at the same time as the building, you can do that if you tell us that by March of 2018. And so, you know, maybe the March Work Session is fine. Maybe the February Board Meeting is fine, or here, I don't, you know, whichever.
And that maybe, and Willie, you'd have, Willie, you'd have to speak up, but maybe you would know more by March than you do by February. But I just, I know that they're looking at different things and they're working with the coaches. They're working, I mean, they're truly working towards a solution, but I don't know, Bruce, that we have the money sitting there to physically build a structure on the Tech campus at this time. So there are, there may be another option for a period of time and that.
Sure, go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, we don't have the money. I mean, we have the money to do what we need to do as a district, whether it's, you know, put in systems or, you know, we did take money a couple of years ago from the general fund to put in safety. So I think whether we have the money will depend upon how important it is to us as a board and my feeling, or as, how important it is to us as a district, so.
Well, I think that what Bruce wants to do is to put the topic on the table and we, I feel that we're discussing the topic that we, that he's asking us to discuss at a, at a board meeting, so.
As Jerry said, it doesn't, to, to bring up gymnastics for the sake of bringing up gymnastics and talk about whether we like gymnastics or not isn't going to be a, it's not going to be an effective meeting. So we have to have something to discuss and so I think, you know, you suggested the item for a meeting. I think that that would have to come back at Agenda Planning and from the superintendent saying, is this the correct time for it or not? Do I have anything that I could? Do I have anything that I could possibly put on the table? But I take your concerns. As far as the timing, I do. Willie.
So, to answer or to comment on, on the topic, what I heard you say, Chair Algren, was February versus March, is there, is there an advantage? The one thing that you definitely said was, there has been work, there is ongoing work behind the scenes, or in terms of looking for a home, and that is most definitely correct. We have our, our board finance chair, Mr. Paul Rice, always makes sure that we have that conversation about gymnastics. And so, just to make sure that everybody here knows that, which I believe everybody here knows that we have that conversation each month. And so, that was one of the conversations, as Mr. Paul Rice stated in his report, is that we were having conversation with gymnastics coaches and people and looking for alternatives in space for the gymnastics program. In that report, or in that conversation this morning, we were in more, or it was more in-depth in terms of talking about the timeline, and we talked about, in the beginning of February, the entities that we had asked, that our gymnastics coaches and we had asked to help us locate some alternatives. They discussed, other two or three weeks, to be able to provide us with some information so that we would be able to have a meeting and to see if that was feasible, be able to talk about that with the district administration, be able to talk about that with finance, be able to talk about that with gymnastics program, and be able to bring that back to the board finance. So, is there a process to be able to get all this on the table? The answer is yes. Are we fully engaged in moving down that path? The answer is yes. Do we understand that there, that the, that a year or so ago, that the architects gave us a specific timeline in terms of to be able to conclude, or to be able to accomplish the facility on-site in concurrent signs? The answer is yes, we understand that. Do we know that we are working diligently to be able to have a recommendation to the board in terms of how to proceed that would match that timeline? The answer to that is yes. And so, we understand the March supposed date in that, and what I'm hearing the board, what I'm hearing Mr. Henshams, what I'm hearing others wanting, is the same thing that we would like, resolution. We would like to be able to say, this is what we recommend, we would like to be able to say, this is what we're going to do, once the board makes that decision. And so, yep, we will have, we look forward to that conversation, look forward to what is happening, look forward to options that are being put on the table and that we're discussing, and being able to share that with the entire board. And when you share that with the entire board, without doubt, making sure that our community understands what we're thinking, why we're doing it, and making sure that there's transparency in all of that.
Thank you. Is there any other items of interest that anyone would like to discuss this evening? If not, meeting is adjourned.